Good morning, I'm going to call to order this meeting in the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It's November 2nd, 2022, and I'll note for the record that all three commissioners are present. We'll begin with our public statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC. And with that, we do have a proclamation today.
Operation Green Light for Veterans in Monroe County. Whereas the residents of Monroe County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces. And the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. Monroe County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. Veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. Approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually, and an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to service civilian life in the near future. Studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. In observance of Operation Green Light, Monroe County encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of their place of business or residence. Now, therefore, we, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, proclaim November 7th, 2022 through November 13th, 2022 as Operation Green Light for Veterans in Monroe County.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Miller. Did you want to add anything?
Oh, I just wanted to thank you so much for taking this opportunity. I appreciate it very much. Hope you have a wonderful day. Thank you.
Thank you. That was Mr. Miller, our Veteran Service Officer. Thank you so much for being here. Uh, thank you Commissioner Jones for reading that. Uh, next we will move on to department updates. We have Ms. Kelly joining us in person.
Hello, good morning.
Morning.
Uh, so according to the Indiana State Department of Health, COVID-19 is stable at this time across the state. Uh, we are monitoring for winter surges, however. Uh, currently nearly 50% of COVID cases across the state are due to the BA5 strain. BQ1 and BQ1.1 cases are beginning to rise. Uh, currently in Indiana, RSV and influenza are prevalent. RSV is starting to plateau in the southern region of the state. We are happy to share that Monroe County, with the help of the Indiana Department of Health, mobile vaccination unit have been able to provide over 900 flu and COVID vaccines uh, during the recent two-day clinics.
That's great news. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
I, I think I saw something recently that, uh, there's a vaccination in the works for RSV. Can you comment on that?
Um, that is something that I have heard as well, so we are monitoring for this information. I don't have anything concrete to share at this time, but that is something, um, that they are working on developing.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
It's just very good news that COVID is stable at this time. Hope it stays that way.
Yeah, and, um, just a big shout out for organizing that, that mobile vaccination clinic 900 is an impressive number.
Uh, yes, we, uh, were very excited and we are currently working with the Public Health Clinic to reach out with those that are homebound, uh, to get vaccinations for them and setting up a clinic with the unhoused population.
Excellent, and then could you, um, remind folks they can get their vaccine at the public health clinic?
Yes, absolutely, so they can call 812-353-3244.
Great, thank you so much. Appreciate you being here. Any other departments have an update to offer? All right, seeing none, uh, we will move on to our next item, which is public comments. This is an agenda item reserved for public commentary for an item not on our agenda. Each commenter is limited to three minutes. At 2 minutes and 30 seconds, you will hear a tone so that you know you have 30 seconds to wrap up your, uh, commentary and statement. Uh, and the same, uh, rules apply for our agenda items as well. And we have Mr. M.G. here from, uh, the Chamber. Good morning.
Good morning Commissioners, Distinguished Staff. Um, this is Christopher M.G. from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, and I, we want to do a plug for our next community conversation, which is Tuesday, November 15th, at the Elks Lodge here on Walnut Street. If you recall, we did a one on, uh, Lake Monroe in June, which was well-attended. And, uh, this is going to be a conversation, uh, to inform the public about the, uh, the vital area when it comes to public safety and how we incarcerate in our community. The Monroe County Justice Response Committee has been meeting for over a year now to discuss ways to implement findings from a 2020 study. So what does this reform entail? Well, the new justice center that is for the planned commission of possibly at Fullerton Pike, um, this current jail facility is failing, cannot be, cannot ensure consistent and sustained provision of constitutional rights of incarcerated persons. That was the assessment from 2020 on where we're at. Beyond the justice center, the report indicates that 75% to 80% of the daily 250 to 320 inmates have some sort of mental illness or substance abuse issue. The current facility does not have the space nor the staff of mental health professionals to address that issue. So Monroe County Government operates and funds the jail and courts, and safety and justice affects the quality of place in Bloomington and in the entire Monroe County. This issue also includes Indiana University and the students it has. So, the conversation will be that Tuesday, the 15th, uh, with doors opening at 11:15 and the program at 11:30 with $15 for chamber members and 20 for the public. We'll have a short presentation, uh, by former city and county attorney Margie Rice, followed by a panel discussion, discussion featuring perspectives on judicial reform from members of our community, including Commissioner, the Jones. Um, we'd like everybody to get out there. We think it's a very important issue. Next up, the, it wouldn't be a public comment from the Chamber without a mention of the convention center. We are, and our key stakeholders are looking forward to next week's meeting with city and county officials and how we can agree on expanding the convention center. This is a real opportunity for collaboration and give and take, uh, to make this a reality. Uh, I thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to offer a public comment for an item not on our agenda? All right, seeing none, uh, we will move on with our next agenda item, please.
Move approval of minutes from October 26th, 2022.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any comments, corrections, edits?
Not for me.
Right. All right, all those in favor of approving the minutes for October 26th, 2022 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Move approval of claim stock it accounts payable November 2nd, 2022 and payroll November 4th, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, and we have Ms. Lutler here from the Auditor's Office. Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, accounts payable for November 2nd, 2022 is $881,374.10. Payroll for November 4th, 2022 is $1,786,774.45.
All right, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Is there any public comment on this item? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the claim stock at accounts payable November 2nd, 2022 and payroll November 4th, 2022 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. I will note for the record, we received a report from Ways and Measures. The report runs from September 16th to October 15th of 2022. And now we are on to new business, please.
Move approval of IU Health Bloomington Community Health Services Agreement Renewal. Fund name, Health, fund number 1159, in an amount of $201,422.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Kelly?
Hello, uh, so this is really just an annual, um, contract renewal for our public health clinic. Um, the only updates, uh, did include a 2% increase, and, uh, this was improved in the 2023 budget. And we have also included, uh, monkeypox with our immunizations.
All right, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No, I think it's wonderful that we're expanding this to include monkeypox, so thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't think.
I don't have any questions either. Thank you for bringing this forward. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the IU Health Bloomington Community Health Services Agreement Renewal signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Move approval of PayGov US LLC Service Agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. We have Recorder Schmitz joining us. Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, let me sign in here. Uh, before I jump into, uh, this, I wanted to take a moment to introduce my new chief deputy, Amy Swain, back here. And, uh, please welcome her to the team. For, it seems like three years, we have not been able to take credit cards in the Recorder's Office. Um, we used to be able to, and we've had people say, oh, you know, express their, their regrets that they couldn't use a credit card or debit card um, to pay for their recording fees or copy fees and that kind of thing. Uh, PayGov is of no cost to the county, and it is a credit card acceptance, basically. Um, it's, it's not the same process as we used to have where it was integrated directly into our software as a point of sale. Um, so it'll take two steps, but it will at least allow us to start taking cards until such time as our software vendor is able to work out a, um, uh, integrating a new company to handle their, their processing.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
Uh, yes, if there's no cost to the recorder of the county, who pays the credit card processing fee? Because there is always one.
Oh, there is. Um, that, that is customer.
Commissioner Jones?
I'm just sure that people will be very pleased that you're taking this step.
Yeah, so is it a flat fee or is it a percentage that the?
There's a percentage, um, it's, I believe it's in here.
Yeah, I wasn't sure. So, so that, so the, um, person knows that they're paying that percentage before they finalize their payment?
Yeah, okay, we, we would have notices.
That is a question, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Great, thank you. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. All right, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the agreement with PayGov US LLC signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Next item, please.
Move approval of ordinance 2022-25 surplus property.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Kreider?
Good morning, Richard Kreider, Fleet and Facilities Manager. This request is to approve the decula- declaration of listed items for surplus. The items were gathered from three departments and include vehicles replaced or beyond service life. That's three vehicles from the Parks and Recreation Department. Uh, additional parts, uh, equipment replaced or beyond service life. That's playground equipment, picnic tables and benches. Again, that's Parks and Recreation. Uh, various equipment replaced or obsolete, um, from Parks and Recreation, Highway Department and the Clerk's Office. Uh, it's a gearbox, two theater lights, and an office chair. That's it.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
All right, thank you for bringing this forward. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving ordinance 2022-25 on surplus property signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Uh, next item, please.
Move approval of the Harold Fish Inc. Service Agreement. Fund name cumulative capital, fund number 1138, in an amount of $11,840.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Kreider, tell us all about it.
Thank you. This request is to approve the contract with Harold Fish Incorporated for $11,840 to remove the current Lieber air conditioner from service and install a new Mitsubishi air conditioner inside the server room. The cost to maintain the declining server room air conditioner at the highway garage is increasing significantly due to a variety of factors, including service work, humidification controls, refit refrigerant leaks, and the challenges associated with performing extensive repairs in its current location above the server room.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
I think this is something that absolutely needs to be done, so, yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, thank you for, uh, pursuing this. Is, so is this going to be repositioned in a way that it could be more easily repaired and maintained in the future?
Absolutely. The current unit is, uh, one box up on top. This one is a smaller split system. That can be located inside.
That makes sense. Great, thank you. Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this issue. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Harold Fish Inc. Service Agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0.
Thank you.
Second. Move approval of PlayPro's Smart Playground Safety Surface System Service Agreement. Fund name 2021 GeoBond, fund number 4814, in an amount not to exceed $18,000.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Whitmer, tell us all about it, please.
Excellent, I'm actually here and I have four agreements I will be talking to you individually about, but let me tell you about the project so we don't have to repeat ourselves four times. At Flatwoods Park, the playground's over 20 years old. You just surplused it. Our park staff will remove it and all the other items that need to be removed, which is actually a, probably a couple of week process. And after that, we have proposed to buy brand-new ADA accessible equipment with the, uh, that you can utilize ramps. We have all kinds of sensory play components on it. And what's also critical is our play surface. Currently, we have, it's called engineered wood fiber, but everyone else knows it as wood chips. And we know that honestly is not the best way to, to get around if you have mobility issues. And this also surface is called the Smarty Play Surface. It literally bounces a little. Um, it's extremely safe. It's, I would say, the safest in the nation. We have been tested over and over at Cars Farm Park in our, we call them their drop test from a height, and how, and we are passing with flying colors. I believe it's the best product on the market, and I, I encourage you all to go out and test it yourselves. Um, it's wonderful. This playground equipment will last over 20 years, probably longer. And the play surface, top surf, it's a complete surface system. There's a whole bunch of stuff underneath it that makes it bouncy and, and makes it, uh, everything underneath it will probably last, could be 50 to 75 years. The top surface is synthetic turf. So that may last 10 years, 12 years. It depends on the temperatures, UV, uh, the weather, uh, things like that. We will maintain it to the best as we can. We'll make sure we blow it off, keep it clean. Um, this will be an incredible, incredible improvement at Flatwoods Park. Um, I can't even tell you. Now you, now you'll be able to bring your children there. You'll be able to, uh, go around. You'll be able to, uh, go in particular swings that we have. We have belted swings, molded swings, so if you don't have the balance to stay up on a, a, a traditional swing, we can, they can belt you in, the parents keep you safe. We also have big round swings where you can, um, get out of your device, put it in. We will have things that go in a circle. We also have things that children who have autism might enjoy also. Um, there's some quiet areas, or, uh, they can go in a circle very slowly if they choose to. So this playground has been thought out and thought out and thought out. And yes, nothing is inexpensive, but we put the stuff in now so we can, um, benefit it for decades to come. And unfortunately, also, we have a standing water problem in this area. That is why the installation is, is, is costing so much is because basically we're ripping everything out. We're putting drain tiles in, stonage, a- and we're doing it right. And once we do this, it'll be right for decades to come. So a little money now goes a long way when you start to replace things in the future. So anywho, the PlayPros, I believe is that the PlayPro surface installation, um, not to exceed $18,000. My estimate will be between nine and 18,000. You say, why is there an estimate? Because we're paying them per person, per hour. So every minute that a park staff can take up some, um, uh, some duties, we don't need their, their staff. But we always plan ahead of time just in case we have injuries, a COVID outbreak, or anything else. They can bring in the expert employees that they have. There is even a crew coming from Texas to help us because there's also a port and play component that's underneath one of the units. These are not skills that you can just pick someone off the street to do. They're very particular professional skills, so it won't exceed 18,000. My goal always to go, is, is to go under the project. So this is what this particular contract is for, is to augment our staff putting in the surface, which is very heavy. They're huge bags. Um, we have skid steers. The chrome rubber goes underneath it. And just so you know, the chrome rubber and stuff does not go out. You do not see it. It is not airborne. It is packed underneath. And that's what makes the bouncy, bouncy part for this thing. So do you have any questions about this particular agreement?
Yeah, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
Well, as somebody who's involved with the disability community, I really appreciate all the, the planning and the forethought that's gone into this. Um, I'm wondering if you're suggesting that we go fall down on the Cars Farm so we can check its balanceiness. But no, I've been out there and I know exactly what it is, and I really appreciate this, uh. It's, it's not often that people with disabilities find a welcoming place where they can actually enjoy themselves. Um, you know, when we talk about DEI, we forget about that belonging piece that goes to it, and this allows people with disabilities to belong in our community. Well, and also it's for the parents. We may have a parent with a disability who wants to supervise their children. This gives them the opportunity to be right there playing with their kids like all the parents should.
Or grandparents.
Or grandparents, yeah.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, this is very exciting. Um, it sounds like you have put a huge amount of thought into it and research and, uh, it, it really will be a wonderful thing for the community. I assume that while the surface is bouncy, it's not like a trampoline.
No, it is not like a trampoline.
Okay.
But go out and try it. You'll be amazed.
Yeah. Yeah. I think at one point, somebody brought sample, a sample floor in for, this would have been years ago. I think we, we saw it and, you know, on a, in a piece of it, and it's very cool, though. It is, it is firm, but yet it is forgiving, and that's great for all the kids on the playground.
And what you saw before was, uh, the same product, but the top product is going to be synthetic turf this time instead of the.
Which is, which is even better. Yes, which is even better.
Which is actually even better.
Yeah.
It's more pleasing to the eye, too.
Yeah, true. All right, let's see if there's, uh, any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium. We have Council, uh, Councilor Marty Hawk on, uh, Zoom. Good morning. Councilor Hawk, there you go.
Right, I've got it. Uh, I'm very excited to hear what's going to be happening out there to make this park so much, uh, more usable than it has been for a long time. We knew when that park was put in place that it was low, that there was water there. Now, it looks like except this is going to make a major difference. Um, and exciting that so many people will be able to use it that might have had challenges in a normal playground situation. So excited to see it, and I hope that those, uh, swings will hold those abus who still enjoy getting on a swing and enjoying it ourselves.
All right, thank you, Councilor Hawk. Any other public comment on this item? All right, all those in favor of approving the PlayPro's Smart Playground Safety Surface, uh, System Service Agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Move approval PlayPro's Playground Equipment Installation Service Agreement. Fund name 2021 GeoBond and Parks Non-Reverting. Fund numbers 4814 and 1178 and 1179, in an amount where the Parks Non-Reverting 1178 and 1179 will pay for $40,000, and the 2021 GeoBond 4814 will pay for $116,249 for a total of $156,249.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Whitmer?
Uh, yes, uh, this is the same thing we were just discussing, but this is the equipment install plus they are doing all of the construction, as in the concrete, the stone, the drainage, the excavation. And we are also going to have two patio, concrete patios next door with cantilevers. Everyone else knows them as umbrellas. We can't rely on trees anymore for shade. And this way, it'll give parents advantage point from all around to view their children and supervise the children. So PlayPros needs to do this all in one thing, so the equipment's just perfect. You can't be off by an inch.
Yeah.
So, uh, it's critical that they do this project. And of course, our park staff will be observing very closely.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
Well, I understand too that by doing this all as a single package, that you don't have to bring them in multiple times, and so it, it's much more efficient this way.
It is efficient, and because if there was a mistake, they're there to correct it. If you have multiple vendors, this could be a disaster.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
All right. Um, I just, I just want to, um, comment that indeed it's, it is important to have the same people doing that work. So I'm glad it worked out that way. Um, just to make sure everything's done perfectly, um, and installed correctly. Um, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the, uh, Zoom screen or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the PlayPros Playground Equipment Installation Service Agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Move approval of Landscape Structures, Inc. Fund names 2021 GeoBond and Parks Non-Reverting. Fund numbers 4814, along with 1178 and 1179, in a total amount of $195,850.69 with a breakdown that Parks and Parks Non-Reverting 1178 and 1179 are paying for $54,600 of this contract, and 2021 GeoBond account number 4814 is paying for $141,250.69.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Whitmer?
Yes, this is the playground equipment itself.
Yes, this is the playground equipment itself. There is uh some equipment uh that is going to Cars Farm Park. We uh it is the cantle, some of the cantilevers, the park board has already approved that. We're doing this as one. Unit so we can have one semi truck come instead of two. It's more cost effective. So we try to plan, everything we buy, we try to get on one truck every single time. The cost is astronomical for freight. So um just to make a note that the Monroe County Parks and Recreation Foundation in the Parks Department, the Park Board. Have um will pop in an extra seventy thousand for this entire project.
Okay, thank you. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Uh, I really um like the look of this equipment. I think it fits really well with Flatwoods Park. You know, um, just the visual of it, I think, is great and it's wonderful to have. Those uh supervision stations with shade. I think that's a fabulous idea and I'm glad that it's also going to be at Cars Farm. Uh, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the zoom screen or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of proving the agreement with Landscape Structures Inc. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of Parity Inc. Smart Playground Surface System Product Agreement. Fund name twenty twenty-one GO bond, fund number forty-eight fourteen, in an amount not to exceed eighty-four thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Whitmer.
Yes, uh, this is actually the, it's called the Smarty Safety Surface. And it's everything below the ground you don't see and everything above the ground is the actual product.
Thank you so much. Uh, comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
No.
And um just wanna shout out to the Parks Board and you and your staff for organizing all of this and the foundation for assisting as well. This is gonna be an amazing project and I can't wait to go out and see it all installed and um I hope I don't have to wait till spring, but I might have to.
Um, and we're hoping April, May, it all depends on whether of installation next year.
Okay, so we are talking about spring.
Yes, we are talking about spring.
Forward to the ribbon cutting will be a nice sign of spring. Uh, all right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the zoom screen or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the agreement with Parity Inc. For the Smart E Playground uh Surface System Product. Uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Um, next item, please.
Move approval of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash forty-four Economic Development Income Tax or EDIT Capital Improvement Plan. Or CIP.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Cockrell.
Yes, uh, as you're aware, the city council um and the local income tax council approved an economic development income tax. That is started collecting, I think, in October, so it's already being collected. Um, it's scheduled to be, it started to be distributed in January. In order to receive a distribution of that tax, you have to have a this plan and a plan of this nature in place. Uh, we discussed this at last week's work session. Um, and so essentially, the project in this plan is the uh Criminal Justice Center. And so we estimate that total cost to be a hundred million dollars. I hope it's not that much, but I think it's safe to say it'll be at least over thirty-two million, which is the uh. Estimated revenues over the next three years for the county's portion of uh Economic Development Income Tax. So if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. Um, but I would hope for approval because we are hoping to sell a bond anticipation note that is centered on these funds. Utilization of these funds and it would be tough to sell with, we didn't know we were gonna get it.
That makes sense. Comments, questions, uh, Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I just want to point out to the public that this is effective to only for July, I'm sorry, January first twenty twenty-three through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. It's just a three-year kind of commitment at this point.
Commissioner Jones?
I'm just very pleased that we're moving ahead with this so quickly. Um, I did want to ask on a somewhat unrelated subject, um, is it on Monday that we go before the City Plan Commission again?
We are in front of the City Plan Commission on November fourteenth, so not next Monday, but the Monday after.
Thank you.
Uh, I don't have uh any additional questions besides the ones I talked about last time. Let's see if there's any public comment uh on this item. Raise your hand on the zoom screen or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving ordinance twenty twenty-two dash forty-four. The Economic Development Income Tax Capital Improvement Plan signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Does this need to also go to the council for approval?
I do not believe so, but we'll make sure we share it with them.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Uh, and now I'm going to um add an item to our agenda. Uh, based on the advice of Mr. Schilling, uh, last week, we had a vote on uh ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-two. The P and G Planned Unit Development um outline plan. Um. We had had a motion to approve and that motion to approve was uh denied by three no votes. But I'm going to go ahead just to set the record straight, uh, to make a motion to deny uh ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-two.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion to deny ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-two. Um, a vote yes means a vote to deny the petition. Um, can we get a roll call vote, Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, uh, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion to deny is approved, three to zero.
It's so, so strange how things work. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Um. I do have a couple of quick announcements. Um, the American Legion Post eighteen uh at eighteen hundred West Third Street. Um, is hosting um an event on Veterans Day from ten thirty AM to noon. Um, and Veterans Day is a week from Friday, so um hopefully uh folks will. Uh, plan uh to attend. Uh, that event, um, and a reminder that. Um, early voting um continues today until six, Thursday and Friday, eight to six. Saturday, nine to four, Monday, November seventh, from eight to twelve. That's at the um Elections Operations Building at Third and Walnut across from the bus station. Um, and Election Day is November eighth, six AM to six PM um at your polling place. Um, also a note uh that there are a couple of blood drives coming up Wednesday, uh, November ninth. And Friday, November eleventh, um, then the uh November ninth, um, blood drive is from one to six. And the Veterans Day eleven eleven blood drive is from ten to three. These are at Ivy Tech. Um, many thanks to Ivy Tech for working with our Emergency Management Department on this. To make an appointment, go to redcross dot org. Um, and we appreciate all of the blood donors in our community. Um, just to note that we uh are accepting applications for all boards and commissions. Go to co.monroe.in.us and you can see what um all of our boards and commissions do, see what's a good fit for you. And consider uh donating your time, expertise and um. Experience to um one of our boards and commissions. Uh, and also a note that we do have. Uh, office hours, six times a month, where you can meet with one of us uh via Zoom. And those six dates are on the calendar at co.monroe.in.us. And uh no appointment needed, just hop on and we'll be there to hear your ideas and to. Um, to uh listen to any concerns you have and and hopefully help you deal with them. So, uh, anything else for the good of the order?
I just want to say that uh early voting at election operations is very smooth. Um, they had eight hundred people vote yesterday. And uh, which is great. I I love to see the turnout be even higher here. Uh, but please, everyone, please vote.
Commissioner Jones?
Well, I'll just add that. A lot that for early voting, they really are getting people through very quickly. So even if there's what appears to be a bit of a line, it doesn't take long at all to get in and actually vote.
Yeah, that's, that is true. I think it took me ten minutes maybe, including the time to vote, so that was pretty good. Uh, yes, and so thank you to everyone who's working um the polls and um we appreciate their hard work as well. Uh, we do have a work session agenda item. It's um ten forty-five now. Can we come back at? Ten fifty-five for our work session? Is that okay? Okay, great. Uh, with that, we'll be back at ten fifty-five for the work session and this regular session meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.